Ah, I thought it was. It's too far. Cake time. He's sitting in the end of the seat. He's not just...
Mm-hmm. Happy to be looking at sharing.
You had to prepare for this. Prepare for this, right? She's still...
This all is Jake's credit.
Okay, perfect. Okay.
I'm getting it. So, carried with that.
Yeah. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone to tonight's September 17th, 2024 city council meeting. I would ask that you please silence all electronic devices. As previously discussed, Councilmember Ronnie Wall will be absent from tonight's meeting. We do have all other members present to have a quorum, and we have excused his absence in advance of tonight's meeting. At this time, I'll call on Mayor Pro Tim Harold Owen for tonight's invocation.
First play, please. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight asking for your guidance, your wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us engage in serious discussion and allow us to grow closer as a city, help all of us nurture the bonds of our community. Thank you for looking beyond our faults and guidance in our discussions, helping us to seek what is best for our citizens. We trust that with your guidance and grace, we can achieve a sense of unity and work together as one. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Our next item is a very special item this evening. Recognition of Chief Code Enforcement Officer Chris Marlin, the North Carolina Association of Zoning Officials, Zoning Official of the Year. At this time, I'd like to recognize our Executive Director of Planning and Development Services, Jamie Lawson. Is Chris here?
Unfortunately, he had a conflict, so I'm graciously not wearing the hat.
Should we reschedule that till he can be here?
I know that he is here in spirit.
Okay. That's a good answer. Yeah, let's go with that now. So...
So, if you welcome the...
Yeah, tell us a little bit about what the award was, what he was recognized for.
I'm really mad at him. So, at this year's NCETA conference that we held during the summer, they nominated Chris, and he receives the annual Code Enforcement Officer of the Year, and this is held throughout the entire state. So, Chris was brought up in the entire conference, and it was a complete surprise to him. And I could tell as they were... There was a person doing the introductions and announcing who this person was going to be and talking about, oh, you know, this person exemplifies this and has contributed to this and has done this. And I could see him, and he's all the way in the back of the room, right? Sitting next to Jeff and Penta. And he was... He doesn't say. I knew that he had received the award, but I don't... Honestly, I don't know who nominated him, but I was extremely, extremely proud to be up there while he received his award, and he was very humbled, very, very humbled. So, I appreciate the councils and the city manager and all the staff's comments subsequently to him receiving the award. It was just an honor to be there, and Chris is a fantastic person. He's a wonderful and dedicated employee. He makes a difference in the city. Him and his crew really make a difference and do it with their full heart and dedication. So, I couldn't be more proud.
Well, let's give him a round of applause. We did announce him last night at the work session as the award-winning Chris Marlin. So, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Our next item on the agenda is Code of Ethics: Disclosing Any Conflicts of Interest. At this time, we'll recognize City Clerk Beverly Smith.
Members of council, it is my responsibility, your and I's duty, to avoid conflicts of interest. I ask if there are any potential conflicts concerning the agenda item.
Thank you. Our next item is the approval of minutes, August 19th, 2024 work session, and August 20th, 2024 city council meeting. At this time, we'll entertain a motion on the minutes.
Make a motion to approve, Sergeant.
We have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Our next item is a request for additions to the consent agenda from yesterday's work session. Item D, City of Meben interlocal agreement for linked transit services. Item E, bank signature resolutions for Atlantic Union Bank. Item F, appointments to City of Burlington Advisory Boards and Commissions. Item G, resolution opting out of the Tyco and BASF class action settlements. Item H, 215 MacArthur Lane, parcel ID 118042, voluntary non-contiguous annexation request. At this time, we'll entertain a motion for the approval of these items to the consent agenda. So moved. We have a motion for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Those items are added. At this time, we'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda with the additions as requested. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving to the consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions about the following items, please let us know. Item A, to approve the reclassification of the Public Works Department's solid waste worker two position from pay grade level 202 to grade level 203 effective upon city council approval. Item B, to approve the reclassification of the Recreation and Parks Department's solid waste worker two position from pay grade level 202 to grade level 203 effective upon city council approval. Item C, to approve budget amendment 2025-14 for the Police Department to allocate funds donated from the estate of Sarah Lou B. Schaffner to further the department's K-9 program. Item D, to approve an interlocal agreement between the City of Burlington and City of Meben to provide a fixed route and complimentary pair transit public transportation services to Meben through linked transit and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement upon concurrence of the city attorney. Item E, to approve banking resolutions with Atlantic Union Bank, authorize the mayor, city manager, the chief financial officer, and the city clerk to execute the contracts, as well as authorize the city manager and chief financial officer and the accounting treasury manager as signers on all associated accounts. Item F, to make the following appointments to the City of Burlington's Advisory Boards and Commissions effective upon city council approval. These appointments are spelled out in the agenda. Item G, to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager and/or outside council, F. Paul Calamita, to execute and file an opt-out notice on behalf of the City of Burlington opting out of the Tyco and BASF class action settlements. And item H, to defer the city council's public hearing and consideration of the applicant's petition for annexation for 215 MacArthur Lane, parcel ID 118042, to a future time pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 160D-202. Burlington City Code Section 40 dot 40 and the terms of the annexation agreement executed by the applicant and the city and filed in the Alamance County Register of Deeds. At this time, we'll entertain a motion to approve the foregoing consent agenda. So moved. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda is approved. At this time, we'll move into our public hearings. We do have seven public hearings this evening, and during each public hearing, there will be a public comment period specific for that public hearing. Moving into our first public hearing, item number one. A public hearing has been scheduled for the city council to receive public comments and consider the proposed FY 2023-2024 Consolidated Annual Plan Evaluation Report, or CAPR, for the Community Development Program. At this time, we'll recognize Michael Blair from PTRC. Is Michael here?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Sorry we couldn't be there in person tonight, but the CAPR is just the end-of-year report for the federal fiscal... Or the city fiscal year ending June 30th, from July 1st of 2023 to June 30th. Basically, it's a report that's due to HUD on the 28th of September every year, never changes. The comment period is a 15-day comment period for the CAPR, which ends on September 24th. Then we'll submit that CAPR in the HUD system before the 28th. $550,000 was spent over that year. Public services was about just under $100,000 at $96,000. 943 infrastructure projects, like city infrastructure, bathrooms, or other public infrastructure projects were 438, 233, and a small admin amount of $14,580. Basically, the typical types of projects that you see in the program over the last few years. If you all have any questions about the report, and it is in draft form, published as in draft form, it will be much nicer once it's actually submitted to HUD by the 28th.
Okay. Any questions or comments for Mr. Blair on this item before we open the hearing? Okay. So, this is a public hearing concerning the submission of the Consolidated Annual Plan Evaluation Report. At this time, we'll open the floor for any public comments on this report. Is there anyone on this side of the room that would like to speak on the CAPR report? Is there anyone on this side that would like to speak? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing. We have a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is closed. At this time, if there are no additional questions, we'll entertain a motion for the submittal of the CAPR to HUD. Motion.
I'll make a motion to submit the CAPR to HUD.
We have a motion to approve the submittal of the CAPR to HUD as requested. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Blair, for being with us this evening.
Thank you, and have a wonderful evening.
You, too.
Anywhere. Bye-bye.
Item two. A public hearing has been scheduled for city council to receive public comments and consider adopting a resolution on the FTA Section 5310 and Advanced Urban Technology Grant Funding Opportunities. So, at this time, we'll recognize Transportation Director Mike Nunn.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This has been duly advertised for this public hearing tonight. North Carolina Department of Transportation has released a call for projects for various federal and state grant programs to support urban public transportation. As a part of this call for projects, a public hearing is required to acknowledge the grant as being applied for and provide the public an opportunity to comment on each of them. I'm going to go through the three requests that are part of the grant package.
Okay.
And also show on the screen. A capital grant to purchase two pair of transit vehicles for $596,888 with a 10% local match of $59,689. A Federal Transit Administration Section 5310, 5310 operating grant to support linked pair of transit services within the City of Burlington in the amount of $485,256 with a 20% local match of $97,051. A State of North Carolina Urban Advanced Technology Grant to purchase pair of transit scheduling software in the amount of $100,000 with a 20% match of $20,000. The grants, if all awarded, would provide 1 main, $182,144 with a total local match of $176,740. As I mentioned, the public hearing has been advertised, staff request the public hearing be conducted, and afterwards, city council consider adoption of the resolution to allow staff to apply for these grants.
No, there's no guarantees. We're just applying for the grant at this point.
That's correct.
And just, I know we were briefed on this, but this is all urban route funding.
Correct. All and within the urban areas, city limits specific with the 5310.
Any questions for Mr. Nunn or city staff, please? Okay, thank you. Mike, this is a public hearing for the application to be submitted for 5310 grant funding opportunities. At this time, we'll open the floor for comments, public comments on this item. If there are any public comments, please come forth. Is there anyone on this side of the room that would like to speak on this item? Item two is public hearing. Is there anyone on this side that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing. So moved. We have a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So, public hearing is closed. At this time, we'll entertain a motion on the resolution on the FTA Section 5310 and Advanced Urban Technology Grant Funding Opportunities to submit it as requested. Is there a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion to submit the resolution, to adopt that. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. So, it's approved. Thank you, Mr. Nunn, for all your work on that. I do want to make a comment. On the podium with the meeting agendas, there was a voluntary form related to this public hearing item. So, for those that want to complete the voluntary Title VI Public Involvement Form, you can grab that. Please do so, and you can fill that out, fold it, and return it to Beverly Smith, and she'll be sure that that gets submitted, to be sure everyone has an opportunity if they so choose. So, thank you. Moving on to item three. A public hearing has been continued for city council to consider a request to rezone property from Heavy Industrial HI and General Business GB to Plan Development PD. The property is located on the block bounded by East Webb Avenue, Johnston Street, East Davis Street, and Everett Street, addressed as Zero East Webb Avenue, and consisting of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 136857. This item has been continued from September the 19th of 2023. At this time, we'll recognize our Executive Planning Director and Development Services, Jamie Lawson.
Good evening again. This map, or this slide, really just highlights the area to refresh our memory. However, the applicant is not present, but has included in your packet, has requested that the matter be continued again for up to one year, and that would be September 16th, 2025. So, that's up to council and to...
There's not any kids going a year out, is it? No, there's nothing in the code. Stop us from it. So moved, Mayor.
So, we have a request for a continuance to a date and time certain, which will be September 16th, 2025, at the city council meeting at that time at 7:00 PM. There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the continuance. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So, that is continued to September 16th, 2025 in these chambers. Our next item, item four. A public hearing has been scheduled for city council to consider a voluntary annexation petition to annex into the City of Burlington a parcel addressed as 707 Tillman Street. The property is contiguous to existing city limits. The parcel is approximately 1.647 acres in size and consists of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 126872. At this time, we'll recognize Jamie Lawson once again.
Good evening. I'm going to lump the four items in the presentation just together, although you should act on them independently, because they're so similar.
Sure.
So, these are the four annexation requests. You can look at the map. Are four, 707, 709, 713, and 715 Tillman Street. They range in size from 8,000 square feet to 1.6 acres in size. They include the lots that are noted here, Lot 1, 2, 3, and 4, and they were created as a result of a final plat for subdivision. So, you're seeing the actual approved subdivision map of the properties. The reason why they're in front of you tonight is they are all contiguous to existing city limits. So, we have already recommended and approved the request for the water and sewer connections, but because they are contiguous, it's in your purview to consider those for annexation as well. These will all be to serve residential construction, some of which have already applied for residential building permits. And so, disregard that last piece there. These are the properties, just so you can tell where the orientation are, and the darker sort of tan color, that's the existing city limits. So, you can see they're surrounded by city limits, and this would just kind of complete that gap there. This item has already been properly note... Or these items have already been properly noticed. So, in front of you tonight is an ordinance for consideration for each of the parcels.
And just for clarification, this is not a resenting request, just a voluntary annexation request for all four parcels.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay, any questions for Jamie? Okay, at this time, this is a public hearing to consider voluntary annexation petition of these four items. They will be addressed one at a time since there are four individual parcels. So, item four on your agenda is the first item at 707 Tillman Street. At this time, we'll open the floor for any public comments. Are there any comments on this item, on this side of the room? Any comments on this side? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. So moved. We have a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is closed. At this time, we'll entertain a motion on the voluntary annexation petition of 707 Tillman Street.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the annexation of one parcel of land which is contiguous to the current city limits, addressed as 707 Tillman Street, PID 126872.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item four is approved. Moving to item five. A public hearing has been scheduled for city council to consider a voluntary annexation petition to annex into the City of Burlington a parcel addressed as 709 Tillman Street. The property is contiguous to existing city limits. The parcel is approximately 8,800 square feet in size and consists of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 179811. This was just addressed by Jamie as well. So, we will open a public hearing on this item, 709 Tillman Street. So, are there any public comments from this side of the room on this item? Are there any on this side? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing. So moved. We have a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is closed. At this time, we'll entertain a motion on 709 Tillman Street's request for voluntary annexation.
May I make a motion to approve the annexation of 709 Tillman Street?
We have a motion to approve the voluntary annexation at 709 Tillman Street. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So, 709 Tillman Street is approved. Item six. A public hearing has been scheduled for city council to consider a voluntary annexation petition to annex into the City of Burlington a parcel addressed as 713 Tillman Street. The property is contiguous to existing city limits. The parcel is approximately 8,000 square feet in size and consists of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 179812. Again, this was part of Jamie's presentation, a 713 Tillman Street. This is a public hearing, so at this time, we'll open the floor for public comments on 713 Tillman Street. Is there anyone on this side of the room that would like to speak? Is there anyone on this side that would like to speak? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing. So moved. We have a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is closed. At this time, we'll entertain a motion on the request of 713 Tillman Street voluntary annexation.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the annexation of one parcel of land which is contiguous to the current city limits, addressed as 713 Tillman Street, PID 179812.
We have a motion to approve the annexation request. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So, thank you. That is approved, 713 Tillman Street. At this time, we'll move to item seven. A public hearing has been scheduled for city council to consider a voluntary annexation petition to annex into the City of Burlington a parcel addressed as 715 Tillman Street. The property is contiguous to existing city limits. The parcel is approximately 10,107 square feet in size and consists of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 179813. 715 Tillman Street was explained by Jamie Lawson as well, and this is a public hearing. So, we will open the floor for any public comments on the voluntary annexation request for 715 Tillman Street. Is there anyone on this side of the room that would like to speak? I think we're starting to develop a pattern. Is there anyone on this side? Is there anyone on this side that would like to speak? Seeing no speakers, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
We have a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, signified by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is closed. At this time, we'll entertain a motion for the request of voluntary annexation petition at 715 Tillman Street.
I entertain a motion to approve the annexation of one parcel of land, which is contiguous to the current city limits, addressed as 715 Tillman Street, PID is 179813.
We have a motion to approve and a second, all in favor, signified by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So, 715 Tillman Street, and item seven is approved. Thank you for everyone's efforts on that. Thank you, Jamie, for all of your work on that. That concludes our agenda items. At this time, we'll move into public comments. I'll call them public comments. For any topics not on the agenda, each speaker is asked to limit public comments to five minutes. Our City Clerk Beverly Smith will time the public comment period, and you will hear their wonderful chime when your five minutes is up. So, Beverly, you got it?
Got it.
You're all ready.
I'm trying out my new call.
Okay. We do ask, as you come forward, please state your name and address for the public records in our minutes. At this time, we'll recognize Tricia Davis, Burlington Community Health Center. Welcome this evening.
Thanks.
Right there in the center, front and center, we've got a perfect spot for you.
And I'm nervous about speaking, and then I realized I didn't have my glasses. So, it looks like I have 20 pages here, because I wrote real big, so that I could read it. Because I didn't want to get up here and I'd be able to read it.
Well, would you please?
I'll give you some, if you'd like some.
Yeah. I'm good. I'm looking.
I started to give you mine, and I said, wait a minute, I'm going to need it.
So...
Could you please state your address for City Clerk?
I live at 6548 Aliments County Line Road, Liberty, North Carolina.
Okay, thank you.
And tried to condense this as much as possible. There's so much I need to say, and you won't understand if I don't say it all, but there's no time to really say all of it. I just want all of it to have the whole picture and the gravity of the situation. August 24th, 2021, I went to Burlington Community Health Center for a yearly physical. I was due the T-DAP, and I told a young lady taking my vitals that I needed it. I guess it's important to know that I have refused all other vaccinations. When she returned, there were three young ladies, not just her. They acted, all I can say is weird or immature. I've worked with youth at risk, and I described it to my kids as they acted like three high school kids about to get in trouble. And I guess that was my gut or something, you know, but I just, you'd never, you'd never think you're not safe in the doctor's office. So, they gave me the vaccination and, or injection, and at that point, I left and went to another appointment later. That night, I become sick. I was pretty sick, really sick. The next day, I was really sick. The next day, I was short of breath, and I didn't put everything together for 26 months. And when I talk about the episode of being short of breath, I have chest pain often on, I have tightness in my chest, I break out in a sweat, my whole body is sweating, and I feel like if I don't sit down, I'm going to pass out. So, on day four after the injection, I went to the ER, because I thought I was dying. I was out of town at my daughter's, and I could not make it back to the car from a ball field. And my daughter drove my car home, and my son-in-law took me to their house. I went to the hospital that night, because I thought I was having a heart attack. So, I never related this to the T-DAP. I don't think I even told him I had the T-DAP. So, these episodes have gone on for three years, and I have recently been diagnosed with two heart conditions. They have become more severe, and they have become more often through the three years. I love warm weather. I'm an outdoor person, but I developed a heat intolerance that's made it very hard to do anything. And I have developed heart swollen lymph nodes on the side of my neck that I received the injection, and many, many other things that I won't go into. My quality of life over the last three years has changed, and I didn't relate it to this injection, I related it to that first episode, and I told my friends, people that I'm closest to, I said, I think I'm dying, and I've made a wheel, and I've started looking to make sure that my animals will be taken care of and stuff, because my life felt different. I felt different than I've ever felt in my whole life. So, my doctors ignored some of the things I would tell them, and, you know, just time went on. And in September of last year, I called to get my T-DAP records, because my daughter was pregnant, and being a first-time mother, she wanted to make sure everybody had the pertussis because of the whooping cough. And they told me I had not had it, and I kept telling them I was sure I had. I know I have. And we went back and forth. So, basically, they admitted that I had received an unknown injection. Amanda Giles, the office manager, and even my doctor said, I was working the day that you received the injection. And Amanda Giles admitted it, that they were saying it happened in December. So, a few days after I found out that I had received an unknown injection, I came down with COVID. I actually found out the day before surgery.
Ms. Davis said, is your five minutes, so if you could kind of wrap this up, I would respectfully appreciate it.
Okay. Yeah. Basically, they will not tell me what I ever see. They, after they found out that I knew exactly what day it was, they no longer, they just sent me, they no longer were nice, they just sent me a letter telling me I had semi-dose by another doctor. To, the Burlington Police Department will not file charges, because it's my word against theirs. And what's important to know is that, number one, I literally told people about this before I knew, 26 months before I knew I received an unknown injection. Also, I had, also, let me just, okay, these are the things, and this is, I just want, these are the things you need to know, that if I had not believed that I received the T-DAP, I would not have called to get my records. If I had not believed that I received the T-DAP, the biggest thing is I was involved in an animal attack in 2022, months after that, and it took me to the bone. When they took me by ambulance to UNC, and they told me I needed that shot, I said, no, I just had the T-DAP, so I don't need it. So, it's not even just what they gave me, it's what they didn't give me, because I left there that day thinking I had one.
Is the, is the, is the situation here where you're trying to get some assistance to get to the bottom of this?
Yes. I want to know, I don't know if I never believed it, but I want to know what they gave me. I want to know what they said they gave me.
So, this is, it sounds to me like this is sort of on the edge of a possible criminal, but investigation says not, but maybe civil. Is it, David, from an attorney standpoint, is this something that we can kind of?
Mr. Mayor, I'd be glad to meet with Ms. Davis and talk to her about the situation, maybe give her a little guidance, not legal guidance.
Mm-hmm. Frontline guidance.
Yeah, and be glad to do that. I wrote down my name and number, and if you need to call, if you were a grandchild outside of the Capitol.
I just want, I also, if this was personal, that's one thing, but if this wasn't personal, do you know how many people they could have done this to at Burlington Community Health Center? That's tragic. I mean, that's sad. And nobody should go to bed at night and cry and wonder if they're going to live to see their grandchildren grow up.
Agree. We'll work it out so that you can get with our city attorney, and we'll see if we can provide some proper guidance on this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, during public comments, Megan Khalifa, is that right?
Khalifa.
Okay. Please come forward, state your name and address for our city clerk, please. Welcome.
Hi, thank you.
It's good to see you.
Thank you. My name is Megan Khalifa, and I am the Associate Director of Church World Service Burlington. We are a refugee resettlement agency. I listed that as my address, because I currently reside in Durham, but all of the clients that I represent are citizens and residents of Burlington, and this is very much affects their living conditions and quality of life, as well as a number of other populations. I brought some friends here who represent different populations regarding public transportation access and how much that does impact so many different facets of life. And it was really great to hear that one of the items tonight was the grant putting forth for the Meben Transit, and I think that's a huge step forward, and as well as just increasing urban transit within Burlington itself. I think with the development of the Toyota factory out in Liberty, followed up with Buc-E's that's coming to Meben, access to other locations outside of Burlington where you're going to have major employers for Burlington citizens, is a huge, huge need to really focus on the improvement of the plus links, whether it's ACTA and the links transit, and I think there's a couple of other public transportation lines. Our clients are recently arriving refugees and new immigrants who are solely reliable on public transportation, whether that's getting to jobs, getting to health appointments. And right now, that is a huge, huge burden and challenge. Many people, when we first arrived to start resettling refugees in Burlington, their question was, oh, man, the transportation, how are you going to do that? And that has continued to be a huge hurdle for us. My friend Titan from United Way can talk about how that really links also to a housing crisis and housing security. When you have people solely reliant on public transportation, or even those who are not quite in a housing crisis, they might have a car, and it breaks down, and they have to make that decision, can I afford to pay and improve, fix my car, or can I pay my rent? They pay their rent, but then they don't have access now to a car to get to their, to get to work, and they can't rely, I think, readily on what the links transit is right now. So, I am really here advocating on behalf of my clients, but on so many other, I think, underserved populations within Burlington, that would really benefit from an enhancement of the link system, as well as reaching outside and of Burlington. So, whether it's to the Triangle area, Durham, or to Meben and Liberty with these new plants opening up, I think it would really be a huge benefit and asset for many different populations and folks within Burlington itself. So, I just wanted to raise that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Next, we have Tanya Rutherford.
Hey there.
Good evening. It's good to see you.
How are you doing this? Give me some grace. So, my name's Tanya Rutherford. I live at 2112 Joyce Court, so east Burlington, and I'm here because I'd like to see backyard chickens. Eggs are no longer $1.39 a dozen, they're up to like $5. And I feel like backyard-raised chickens are not only healthier, they're happier, they're good for the environment, they reduce food waste, because they can eat waste scraps. There was a city in Belgium who did a study on that, and it was, I think we probably all heard that, right, on Facebook at one point, but it reduced a lot of waste. But they're healthy, they're a complete protein, they're the most affordable protein that you can buy. And for people facing food insecurity, to have chickens in your backyard is a really easy way to get extra food and protein. They're very small, they don't take up a lot of space, you only need, I want to say, 60, well, for six chickens, you can put them in a coop that's 10 by 16 with a run, which is pretty small. And you can buy a 10 by 20 chicken run for like $200 on Amazon. It has a cover, it has the wires, the door, the whole thing. So, if you have a fenced-in backyard, I think it's an easy thing we could do. I think if there's concerns about having the chickens, we could maybe make it a permit thing, where you apply for a permit to show you have an enclosed backyard, you have an appropriate coop or run for them. And then, if somebody violates whatever, you could pull the permit from them, and they're not allowed to keep their chickens, if they don't, you know, maintain a health and safety standard for those chickens. I know pretty much every other city allows them. Sorry, let me run to it. Charlotte, you're allowed to have 20. Greensboro, no limit. Raleigh, no limit. Durham and Fayetteville, you're allowed 10. Meben, up to 16, but normally 10. So, bigger cities, smaller cities, Har River, Graham, they all allow it. I think it's time to revisit allowing backyard chickens. I don't see a negative to them. And that's it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate you being with us this evening. That concludes our public comments this evening. It's his time we'll move to City Council comments. I have none on my notes. Is there any comments from any of the council? Break any comments, staff, any issues?
Yes, sir.
All good?
No comments from Big Pot.
No City Council comments. We will, at this time, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signified by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.